All right. Good morning or good evening. Everyone, this is Joanna Bird, Executive Director with NASWPA. And welcome to our annual, our quarterly town hall meetings that we do four times a year. Um, for one and a half hours of CE credit and these particular series of workshops because we're going to be talking about uh, current events in Pennsylvania and um, you know, things that are important to the social work profession. Uh, we want to ensure that they're available to everyone in Pennsylvania. So they are free regardless of whether you are a member or a non-member. So for future ones of these, if you're on today, please make sure that you're sharing the word and um, potentially letting other folks know about uh, this, this opportunity for, for some free CE's. Um, all right, I want to uh, make a couple of introductions of some folks that are going to be able to participate with us tonight. Uh, one is going to be our, uh, one of our legislative committee co-chairs, Kathy Yorkevitz. Kathy, if you want to say hi?
I guess I should say hi. Hi, I'm outside, so you're not seeing me, but I'm glad to be here and welcome everybody.
Thank you. I know we'll have a few other people um, that I'm expecting uh, to join, uh, join with us later today. Um. The first thing that I wanted to talk about while we're waiting for some of those other folks to get on um, is it what's going on in relation to the social work compact? Um. That one is pretty important and we're actually seeing some movement here in Pennsylvania. So I will go through that just a little bit with you. Um, because I know one of the things we're going to be talking about today is like making those appointments with your elected officials. And that is um, something that you know, there's an opportunity for literally right now as we work, as we uh, move forward with the social work compact. Uh, so the social work compact is um, will allow anyone with a licensed that is a licensed as a social worker to work in any of the states that have passed the compact. Um, this was started by, you would have to, well, first off, you would have to get an additional uh, multi-state license. Uh, in order to do that, you don't have to pass any other exams or meet any other requirements. Um, at least at the moment, everything that um, that you'd be required to do, you're already required to do in order to obtain your Pennsylvania license. Um, but the general idea is um, you know, it was started by the Department of Defense a few years ago. Um, in part because of the need uh, with military families um, that you know, they move from state to state. And the folks who are the spouses of those milit- of those um, soldiers might have to get their uh, like work too hard to obtain their license and meet all of the requirements, et cetera. Just to get like relocated 18 months later and have to do the same thing all over again. Uh, we've also seen many of those things happen in regards to um, uh, folks who, you know, like here in uh, in the cup, within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, folks who um, live in Philadelphia, but also have clients who are from um, New Jersey or Delaware. Um, folks who have across the other side of the state, people who work in uh, work in or live in Pittsburgh area, but might have clients from West Virginia or Ohio, uh, folks in the, from the northern part of the state who might um, be literally closer to crossing us uh, New York than they are to, to any place else in Pennsylvania. So we've seen uh, people needing to get those licenses again and again and repeat that. Um. And having to do those stages and maintain those multiple licenses can definitely be a burden. Um, so that was where the bill came from in the first place. And it's actually been very, very fast moving, which I think is a, not only a testament to like the legislative advocacy that social workers do and that NASW is responsible for. Uh, but it's also a big testament to the need for this kind of um, for this kind of information. You know, and that crosses party lines too, because it has been equally likely to pass in Republican-led states as it has in uh, Democratic-led states. Um, although not without its challenges in either. Um. But two years ago was when the first one passed and that was like one state or the state of Missouri. Then it had to meet a total of seven in order to, to come into fruition. Um, that following year, last year in 2024, 22 states passed the um, the social work compact. So we easily cleared the hurdle of needing at least seven. And uh, then immedi- and then got all the way to um, you know, as I said, to 22, uh, 23 states, including Missouri that passed the year before. And now in 2025, uh, we're back in the thick of the legislative sessions and um, we've hit, we've gotten another five, six states down. So um, it is definitely moving fast and covers more than, more than half the country. Uh, Pennsylvania had a bit of a challenge because we had a um, obstacle that related to the FBI um, being able to pass on information for Pennsylvania residents about our background checks. That was overcame. In fact, the process wise, I think everyone is saying that um, that they've been actually able to pass like some of those technology tests that say that the information is clearing in the way that it was supposed to. Um, and so some of those other compacts that have passed in that have passed in uh, in Pennsylvania, like for must um, nursing compacts, et cetera, are actually going to be able to go into effect and be um, and, and have those actual licenses issued for, issued for people in Pennsylvania. Um, now, so that's where we've been and we've been uh, and we as the Pennsylvania chapter have been working hard to get our bill passed. Uh, we have a bill in the House that is um, House Bill 554, uh, sponsored by Representative Arian Abney. Uh, and then we also have a Senate Bill 583, uh, sponsored by um, Republican and veteran uh, Trace, Tracy Pennycook. Um, Senator Pennycook uh, has filed the bill in the, in the Senate. Um. Again, important that it's a bipartisan bill because with the way that our Pennsylvania legislature is structured with the Senate being controlled by Republicans in the House and the governor's seat being controlled by Democrats. Um, pretty much nothing is going to get passed unless it has at least some level of bipartisanship. And uh, the social work compact has been fortunate enough to do that. Um, why it's even more exciting news in and uh, relevant for Pennsylvania is that we've finally heard that um, for the first time since we, since we filed the bill two years, uh, two years ago and refiled it at the beginning of this session, uh, there is actually going to be a committee hearing that is coming up May 6th, uh, so a week from today, uh, letting a that uh, where they will actually vote on um, it, on the bill. And then if it passes that committee vote, it then goes to the House floor where it needs to be read three times. Um, then at some point there it would be referred to appropriations. We don't expect appropriations to be an obstacle because there's no financial um, thing associated with this bill. There's no cost involved. Um, and then uh, and then from there it would go on to final reading, um, pot- potentially pass the House. Um, at then, at that side, it would have to, the same bill, the House version would then be referred to the Senate and would have to pass um, and would have to pass the Senate. Um, we may also see some action on the Senate bill in the same time. Um, but definitely, uh, if you um, well, definitely if you happen to live in the district of one of the members of the House Professional Licensor Committee, then we encourage you to meet with phone call, email, whatever, to call your legislator and ask them to um, you know, to make sure that they're voting yes when it comes up on the committee bill. Um. And then uh, but besides that point, you know, not, definitely not everybody uh, lives in the district of one of those committee members. It's also a good time to uh, contact any member of the House of Representatives. Specifically the House at this point, not bothering too much about the Senate at the moment. Um, but the, at the House bill to uh, to say just, hey, can we, you know, can, will you commit to voting on this bill when it comes before you in the full House of Representatives? Um, so that's kind of where that is staying at the moment. Um, and that is a really big, important announcement that we are very excited about. I did want to see, is there any questions um, et cetera about that? Um. Either how it's been happening in other states, what it's looked like in Pennsylvania, anything that you might want to know. Um, feel free to write that in the chat or um, and I'm going to check the chat right now for our comments, but for our current comments. Uh, but now that I'm opening it, I'm just seeing a lot of highs and welcomes, which thank you for those too. Uh, but if you do have a comment, feel free to either get off of mute or to um, or to uh, like type your, your comment or question into the chat. Oh, I noticed, um, I noticed just now that uh, one of our lobbying, uh, one of our lobbyists has ma- has joined the, has joined the call. So I want to take this opportunity to introduce uh, Angie Armbrust. Angie, if you want to um, come off mute and say hi, and then if there's also anything that you want to share that I may have. I don't know exactly when you came in, so there might have been pieces that you missed when I was going through all of that. But um, if there's anything that you noticed that I left out.
I just got in, sorry about that. Um, I will do a quick introduction. My name is Angie Armbrust. I work with uh, McNeese GR. We are the state government relations firm for NASWPA, so representing your organization and all of your members uh, to the Pennsylvania State Legislature and Administration. So thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here. Um, all right, we did get a question in the chat and that is, can we share again what is needed for other states? Um, in order to practice in the other states, should this bill come into, come into effect? What would happen is that whenever, is that you would um, as a licensed social worker, licensed clinical social worker, licensed bachelor-level social worker. Um, you could, um, you would then fill out a form to say like when you're either renewing your license or when those first become available, to say that you also want to apply for the multi-state license. It's a, it would be a small additional fee. This was, some of those details are still being worked out because like I said, it's a very fast-moving bill. So um, no, even though 26, you know, 27 states have, have officially joined the compact legislatively. Um, officially, no individual social worker has joined the compact yet because those licenses are not available. Um, so uh, but, and so some of those things like the fees and all of that are being determined by the license, by the uh, Compact Commission that is working to establish some of those things now. Um, but regardless, the general idea is you would pay an additional fee, um, clear the FBI background check, that sort of thing. This again is as a licensed social worker. And then you would be able to practice as a licensed social worker at the same level. You know, so LSW to like maybe a comparable LMsw in another state. LCSW, you know, but like connects to clinical licenses in other states. Uh, but you'd be able to practice at that, at that same level in every other state that there would be um, that, that has joined the compact so far. Um. Anyone else, like if you wanted to practice in a state that was outside of that compact, then it would be kind of like it is now where you would have to either um, get a license in that state um, or like get some sort of authorization. And yes, Deborah, it is very good news that we are headed to a vote in about, in about a week. And like I said, it's a great time to contact um, to contact your elected officials. Um, the bill number is uh, like to answer Melissa's question about having come in late and missed the, missed the bill number information. It is uh, House Bill 554. And um, yes, contact your House representative now because we're seeing and expecting action to be happening in the House. But we're not currently expecting anything under, under the Senate. Not to say it's not moving there, just that, you know, there's nothing currently happening. Um, the question from Lucia about will there be additional CE requirements under the compact? No, you are responsible for maintaining the CE requirements in your current state. Um, at least that's the way that it's currently structured and projected. You know, if things were to ever change in that regard as they up, you know, as they update. Um, and as the compact actually gets formulated, uh, we would update you, but that is the expectation is that you'd be required for meeting the CE requirements in the state, in your home state designated, your um, domicile. Um, which is like related to where you, where you live or work. Um. And that's going to be true for like supervision hours or any of those other like requirements. If you meet the requirements in your home state, then the other states are allowing you to practice there, even if there might be some holes or um, things that you might be missing from what it would take to get licensed if you were applying there from scratch.
Can I ask a question, Joanna?
Absolutely, Marilyn.
Hi, everyone. Marilyn Johnson here. So um, let's say looking into the future, and I'm sorry, I'm recovering from bronchitis, so I sound a little nasal. Um. Compact passes, right? Being positive, we get the compact license, yay, right?
Yay.
And yay, everybody parties, right? And now we have the compact license and we have all these states that are part of the compact. Then let's say a year from now, I'm gonna make up, say that hypothetically a state that's not part of it becomes part of the compact, right? So then that state would, I'm gonna pick on Florida. I don't know why, it just came to my mind.
I literally happen to be in Florida right now, like visiting my mother, so.
Look at that, read your mind, right?
Yeah, it just.
So, excuse me. So Florida, let's say hypothetically, a year from now becomes part of the compact. Then, I don't know if you would know, then would then Florida automatically be added to, let's say, the compact list automatically? And then we can just go and say, oh, Florida is now another bullet point for all of us compact licensees. Right? And then we could start taking clients from there and everything gets automatically updated? Or would they be something, would you know, paperwork that needs to be done? I, I just thought of that as you were talking.
Okay, my understanding of how that would work is that yes, you like as new states join the compact, then you would automatically, like if Pennsylvania were already a compact state, then we would get to add those in or um, and be able to practice in those states as well. Um, one thing that is kind of interesting to know um, is that um, like only your home state can like do any kind of decision against you, the compact, like a d- a compact state could theoretically like ban you from practicing in their state if they didn't like something that you did for some reason. But they would not have the ability to like impact your license. They would just have to report that back to the comp, to the overall compact. And then um, you know, and then that would kind of go consistently along with, along with that. Um. And that's the, that's kind of the general um, idea, like you would be able to, to practice in those states. Oh, that's, that's the other thing that I wanted to, to mention. You are responsible for knowing the laws and the rules of every state where you practice. Now that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you do get a multi-state compact license and suddenly you have to memorize like 40 laws and rules because you're not going to have clients from every single one of those states. But if you're working with a client from, in your hypothetical Florida, if you were working with a client from Florida and Florida had a rule that said, um, you know, that in, in, uh, with Florida clients, you're not allowed to um, you know, to do XYZ. And then you did it, even though Pennsylvania does not ban that. You would still be, it would still be problematic because it would be like, well, you, 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 you know, you're, you took on a Florida client. You're responsible for knowing Florida's rules. But um, let's say that were to happen, then Florida could like then say, well, yep, you're not allowed to work here anymore. Uh, you can't take on any more Florida clients. Uh, but that doesn't pull your whole compact license, nor does it impact your Pennsylvania license. They would then just report that information and um, but they, the only power that they would have as an independent state would be to um, would be to say that uh, that uh, that, that you can't work there, that you can't practice there. And that's kind of on the compact board to keep track of all of that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
No problem. I see from our video screen, uh, you're under a different name than, than normal. But I see that uh, our president, uh, Sierra McNeil is with us. Uh, Sierra, if you want to, yeah, she's labeled under, under our obvious names.
Angie, I, I used the link that you sent me. Um, and so I just realized, I wonder if I can do a rename.
I think so, but that actually is part of the reason why it took me a long time to realize you were there until you showed up on my video feed.
All right, there we go. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, hope we are well. Um, thank you all for coming out tonight. So we do have, uh, well, I would like to talk about a cool initiative that's going to be happening uh, with our chapter. So give me one second. I'm going to share my screen. Well, that's it.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the share settings so that you can do it.
Okay, thank you.
You should be good.
All right, let's try now. Can we, now my computer's being slow. You gotta love technology.
Okay, well, while you're kind of working on that, there was one more question that popped up in the chat from, um, from somebody asking about the compact. Um. Yeah, you've got, like have somebody who has an LCSWC in Maryland, lives in PA. Um, and does virtual tech, uh, virtual client, uh, virtual treatment with clients in Maryland. Um. Yes, theoretically speaking, Maryland has already, they, they're one of the states that did it this year of passing the, the social work compact. So we know they're, like I actually just saw photos on their Facebook feed from um, the signing ceremony that they had with the governor in Maryland. So that one was very exciting. Uh, can't wait until we're doing something similar with our governor. Um, but uh, yes, so they would be, uh, they would be part of the compact. So if Pennsylvania was also a part of the compact, then you would no longer need to maintain a Maryland license. You could. You know, if that's the only client you're seeing and you wanted to just deal with Pennsylvania, you know, and you wanted to just deal with the Maryland license, that would be one option. But um, certainly if you were, if you had the Pennsylvania license and the, and the multi-state license add-on, then you would be able to see those Pennsylvania clients. President McNeil, how's it going?
Great. Just waiting for you to finish. I didn't want to share the screen.
All good.
So first, um, I'm actually going to share a video because I realized that sometimes when I share screens, um, if I go from a PowerPoint to a video, it doesn't always work. So I'm first going to share a video with you all. And you, if you are following us on social media, some of you may have already seen this video. Um, but for those of you have not, I hope you enjoy this and give me one second because I have to, okay, let's see if you can. Joanna, can you let me know if you can hear the sound on this?
I will. Not hearing anything yet. Nope.
Okay, give me one second.
Three, two.
Perfect.
My fellow social workers, the work we do is nothing short of transformative.
Every day, we stand on the front lines advocating for justice, dignity, and rights of those who are often forgotten.
But let's be clear, our profession is not just about the hearing out. It's about moving forward, pushing boundaries, and breaking new ground.
We are not just helpers, we are changemakers. We empower not only the individuals we serve, but also the entire community.
And as we continue to grow and evolve, we must never forget the power value.
The work profession has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of.
But let's also remember that advocating for others starts with advocating for ourselves.
We deserve fair wages. It reflects the impact we make and the challenges we face every day.
It is time that we stand up for higher salaries for social workers because our value goes beyond words. And we fight for a world where everyone's voice is heard.
So let's continue to move forward together.
Let's continue to lift each other up, to challenge the status quo and to become advocates our communities need.
Because when social workers rise, so does the world around us.
All right. I hope you all uh, enjoyed that um, video. And so now I can actually start the presentation. Up. Okay. Um, all right. So if you have attended LEED, uh, you should have heard one of our chants was "See us, support us, pay us." Um, and so what we decided to do was turn that into an actual uh, campaign. Um, and this will campaign will take us all the way up into the end of my presidency, which is going to be June of 2026. So this is a year-long, um, well, actually more than a year-long because we're a little bit uh, further, we're, we're in uh, April. So it's a little bit more than a year. Uh, but this will take us hopefully um, to the end of my presidency. So see us, support us, pay us. And so I had to get ready here because this was my cue to show you the video, but I already showed you the video. Um, okay, so when we show up, they listen. So how did we come up with this concept for this campaign? And what is it all about? Um, so since my presidency, I have really been trying to figure out how do we organize social workers? Especially when we talk about advocacy and policy reform. Um, and so you have seen different initiatives that first started with the um, actually we do more, uh, we had a campaign drive, we asked you to get involved for a year. We also tried district days. Um, but we uh, switched up um, LEED a little bit where we added the actual march in the beginning. Um, and so we have been trying different things and seeing sort of what sticks. We have also been learning um, what is not working and sort of taking those as lessons as well. Um, and so all of that information has sort of come to this campaign, um, or this movement that we are uh, looking to do for the next year. So see us, support us, pay us is a, oh, hold on one second. I gotta move you guys on Zoom so I can actually see this. Okay. So see us, support us, pay us is a movement that is demanding fair wages, policy reform, and greater recognition for social workers who are the backbone of the mental health, the mental health and community care. Uh, this campaign amplifies our voices. It connects us to advocacy opportunities. And it demands that policymakers prioritize the profession that prioritizes everyone else. It's time to invest in those who dedicated their lives to serving others because when social workers thrive, so does communities. Or communities do too, sorry. Sometimes I remember stuff from a speech that I did a little bit ago. So uh, see us, support us, pay us was not just something that we thought of off the top of our head. This uh, the words actually mean something and it, and I would like to break that down for you all. So CS, we are talking about highlighting the critical role of social workers. So CS, we are talking about highlighting the critical role of social workers through personal stories, testimonies, and day-in-life content. So one thing that I learned pretty early on stepping into the president role, but also my director role is um, I got feedback. And so this is not something that I just thought of, but this is actual feedback from an elected official that social workers don't bring our challenges to the forefront. Um, and so I had to really think about what does that mean and what does that look like? Because as social workers, we are advocates. We are constantly talking about um, injustices that we see. We are constantly advocating for not only our profession, but for our communities. Um, and so when I think about CS, how do we um, how do we help you all um, with sort of sharing some of your stories and what does that look like and bringing the challenges that we face every day as social workers to the forefront? So that is what CS is about. It's about elevating social work and reminding uh, Pennsylvania and also the state government that social workers are the backbone, one of the professions that's the backbone of Pennsylvania. Keyboard is not working. Sorry, you all. Give me one second. Try this again. Hopefully technology on my side now. Um. So that's CS. So support us. So showcase advocacy wins, legislative updates, and how people can take action. I, sorry, my dog is barking. Um, I don't know, um, Joanna, if you had mentioned anything about the compact and um, actually Joanna, did you mention anything about the compact? I knew that you were talking about it, but what exactly?
I definitely did. That was what, that was how we spent um, the first few minutes of the, of the town hall was we went through. We went through what the compact is, um, what it means, like kind of status-wise, where we are with um, with the initiative. And answered some Q and A about like how it actually works.
Okay. And so the other thing is talking about, um, so then I won't reiterate that because we're also on time. And I want to make sure that we have enough time for uh, the lobbyists to get to their training. Um, so showcase advocacy wins, legislative updates, and how people can take action. Um, and so the point of support us is how can we get the government to really understand that social work is a specialized profession? I was in a meeting on yesterday. I can't believe yesterday was Monday. It feels like I'm already at Thursday today. But I was in a meeting yesterday, um, where we were talking to some leaders uh, around the Behavioral Health Commission. And I was asking questions about um, how are they viewing social work? What does the government understand their role? Um, and sort of making sure that they're producing competent um, behavioral health workers, or in this case specifically, social workers. Um, because at the end of the day, we are in the public system and we are caring for their constituents. And so the role of the government is to make sure that we are getting everything that we need. Um, and so that is what support us is about, is helping the government understand that social workers need support, that we are just not hatched. We don't just, you know, pop up off the street and all of a sudden we want to be a social worker. But also helping them understand that not everyone can be a social worker. You cannot just pull someone off the street and put them in a position that social workers are doing and expect them to be able to do their job. We have tons of education. We have tons of supervision. We have internships. And so we are a specialized profession. And so just reminding the state government of that. And then pay us. And I am so sorry to put these numbers up there. Um, but for those of you that don't know, my day job is um, in workforce development. And so I have a lot of data around um, just the workforce challenges. And one of the things is that I'm constantly advocating for is salaries. So pay us is about sharing data on social work wages, what some of the workforce shortages that we are currently experiencing, and then policy demands in a digestible way. Um, because for some reason, every time we get to talk about salaries, everyone's brains turn off or we hear, we don't have money and we don't have this. But if you really want to fix the problems and if you really want to help social workers in the state of Pennsylvania, then you need higher salaries. Um, and so when you look over here, I have di- the different salary levels, and I want to be clear. These are medians. This is not, I obviously depending on what county that you live in, um, the salaries may look very different, but this is, this is the uh, median salary for social workers in the state of Pennsylvania. And when I did the research and I saw these numbers, it really hurt my heart because I know as a social worker myself, I know how challenging it is to be in this field. I know what it means to go through your master's program and have to figure out how am I going to do my internship? How am I going to do um, how am I going to do my actual classes? And then how can I work and, you know, take care of family? All of that work that we put into it to then come out, if you're a master's level, um, at forty-two-five. That is, that is unacceptable. That's not even a livable wage for someone who's a master's level. Now, if you notice, I did not separate MSW from LSW. The reason why I did not separate MSW for LSW is because in the state of Pennsylvania, you can actually practice without having your license. And so that's also part of the challenge when we talk about raising wages for social workers. There's no distinction in the system between an MSW and an LSW. The only distinction that happens is at the BSW level, the MSW, which they categorize LSW in that same category, and then the LCSW. Those are the only three distinctions that we have in the state of Pennsylvania. Um, and so really looking at how are we advocating for higher salaries um, for social workers? Um, okay, so what does this campaign look like? What are some of the things that we're going to be doing? How are we going to organize around this? And so social workers need, I am so sorry, um, someone does not have their thing muted. And so there's a little bit of background noise every now and again. So if we can just please mute our uh, mics, that would be helpful. Um, so engaging content creation. Um, as someone who is not a huge fan of social media, I mean, I'm more active on LinkedIn, but on my other social media platforms, I'm not as active. I understand that there's value to utilizing social media. And so we as a chapter have been really thinking about how are we going to utilize social media, but not just social media, um, other forms of media as well to, to help out. So these are some things that we're thinking about. So we have some hashtag ideas because again, we want this to be fun for you. We want to create opportunities where you don't feel like it's such a hassle, but you feel like you're getting something um, out of this. You feel like you're actually advocating, but you're also having fun at the same time. So we have developed some hashtags. And then we're also looking at creating some Zoom background because when we're going to be asking for videos or we're asking um, for um, you know, different speaking, we want to make sure that we all have the same background, um, just for consistency purposes. We are also looking at, and this is going to be a little tricky because I am someone um, that is um, aware of where we are at currently in our climate. Uh, when I talk about climate, I'm talking about our political climate. And so I know that op-eds, um, as well as uh, interviews and some other um, outlets are really helpful when getting our issues out. What we are doing before we ask you all to do anything, these are some of the safety considerations that we're thinking of. We're looking at how can we generalize the story so that we are uh, avoiding professional risks? Um, we don't ever want someone to submit something to us for, uh, sorry. We don't ever want someone to submit something for us that is going to put their profession at risk. And so we are looking at how do we generalize the stories? So then that way we make sure that we are protecting you all. We also, um, I am working with um, a couple uh, people in my day job around op-eds. Um, so how do we do op-eds? I know that nonprofit in Philly. Um, and so op-eds is something that we absolutely cannot do. However, I did find that there's a workaround. And so I'm looking at, is there a workaround that we could do as a professional organization where maybe we say this is submitted by NASW members. So then that way we're protecting you. So we want to make sure that we are providing safety first before we are asking any of you to do something uh, for the chapter. And then the peak pieces will focus on policy demands um, rather than personal uh, cases. So when we're talking about the op-ed, we really want to make sure that this is how we get our policy demands out. Um, that is something that uh, again, was reported back to me from an elected official of that we want to know sort of what are your demands? What does that look like? When you talk about policy reform, what exactly are you looking for? What bill ideas do you have? That was also something that was communicated to me that when we look at nurses, when we look at police officers, teachers, one thing that they have been able to do well is that they bring bill ideas to um, to elected officials. Now, we're not saying that NASW does not do that, but we're actually trying to figure out what are some different avenues that we can take to bring uh, policy reform to uh, the forefront. Um, so engagement and call to action. So advocacy challenges. So um, wow, there's a, there's an extra space in there. So encouraging social workers to post a selfie or video explaining why this campaign matters uh, to them with a hashtag. So again, we want to make this fun. Um, and so we will have some, um, if we put a call to action out, um, asking you to either call your representative or uh, whatever that advocacy or that call to action is, we hope that you participate. But again, we want to make this fun. And so is there a way that we can have a can, a way where we're posting videos? Um, and we're making a hashtag and we can get that out explaining why this campaign is important to us as social workers. Now, getting involved. So what uh, does this look like? And I put a few things on here because I understand that everyone's level of involvement is going to look different. Um, and so your first very, very simple level is to follow us on social media. Um, but we are working really hard to make sure that everything that we send out either via newsletter or via email, we are also posting on social media. Um, this is one because we want to make sure that we're getting the information out to everyone, not just our members, but also those um, social workers in the state of Pennsylvania as well. Because when we are advocating, we're not just advocating for our members, we're advocating for the profession of social work in Pennsylvania. So um, I make everyone do this. You don't have to do this if you don't want to, but if you do have your phone, just pull it out, whatever uh, social media platform that you use the most, if you would like to follow us. We are on Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Um, if you're like, okay, I'm ready to take the next step, join NASW. Um, that is the next step and we would love to see you join and participate. And so one way that you could participate is that we have plenty of committees that are looking for members. Um, our committees are one, one hour a month, depending on what the committee is. Um, but one hour a month. So if you're someone that's like, hey, I want to be involved. I maybe can't commit to some of these other things, but I can definitely commit to maybe one hour a month by um, by having my voice heard in our committees because our committees are the ones that are doing the work. The committees are the ones that's helping um, inform uh, the board. The committees are the ones that are sort of boots on the ground, right there. Our workforce committee created a survey um, for the student um, internship experience. And they, out of that, they were able, they were able to actually get something published out of that. Um, and so volunteer, there will be plenty of opportunities for you um, to volunteer. Um, and so if there's an opportunity where you're like, I can't commit to something ongoing as a monthly meeting, but I can do a one-off situation, whether it's district days, whether it's joining lead, or maybe some other activities that we may have, um, feel free to volunteer for uh, those. The biggest thing and the most important thing, because I never want anyone to feel pressured into doing something, find an avenue that works for you. If it's one of these are up here and you're like, I can absolutely commit to these, I would say encourage you to please commit to one of these. If for some reason you're like, you know what, this seems a little bit much, please feel free to reach out to me. I love talking to social workers. I love sort of hearing your stories. And I would love to see if there is something that we are maybe not thinking of as a chapter that we should be thinking of and sort of seeing how you could also contribute to that as well. I would say in this part, uh, as far as getting involved, I do love talking to social workers. I love hearing your stories. Please bring us more than just um, um, suggestions or complaints. I hate using the words complaints. Um, because I also want to know, do you have solutions? Uh, my expertise is, like I said, very much in workforce development, project management, and program development. However, there are other aspects of social work that I would love to learn more about. I had someone reach out about a VA program that inspired this person to um, actually become a social worker. Uh, they had a social worker when they were receiving VA social, um, uh, VA services. And they had such an amazing experience with that social worker that they have now come back to school to become a social worker and sir, uh, um, and, and serve in the VA. So I love hearing these stories. Um, I love talking to social workers because, so please feel free to reach out to me. Um, so getting involved. So these are some upcoming events that we have. Um, so we already had uh, LEED. So again, thank you all for showing up. I believe we had close to six hundred social workers. Um, and that is amazing. It was a very exciting day. My nephew came with me. Um, and he was like, auntie, there's a whole lot of people here. Um, and so I was very excited for him to sort of see that, but I was also happy to talk to so many social workers. Um, a lot of you came up to me. We just had side conversations about what LEED meant to you, how you um, how it inspired you and empowered you to, you know, really be involved in sort of policy and advocacy. And so I love hearing stories like that. And I love seeing social workers get the most out of LEED. A couple of the events that we have coming up is that we have our press conference. So this is our budget priorities press conference. This is where we'll be talking about as a chapter, what are some of our budget priorities? I believe this will be shown either on the PCN network and most of the time I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joanna or Angie, I believe they do post it on YouTube. Um, and so this is an opportunity for you all to either watch that. Or I would say if you have an opportunity to come up to the Capitol on June third, I would love to have social workers standing behind me with the See Us Support Us Pay Us on posters that we had for LEED. So if you do have an opportunity to come up uh, to the press conference, uh, please make that, um, please feel free to reach out to me and um, we can talk about sort of just arrangements of timing and where we're going to meet and all of that. Um, I, I believe we might be putting something out. Don't quote me on that. Um, but just to see if there is an interest for people to come to Harrisburg that day and sort of just support NASW in our budget party uh, press conference. Then we will have district days. So we did district days last year and we learned a ton of lessons around district days. And it wasn't that this is not a great advocacy opportunity. We learned as a chapter, there were some um, few things that we could have improved on. And so we are going to try this again. Um, and so um, I'm actually not going to go too much into district days because I know that Angie's going to be talking a little bit about this. Um, but these are some of the dates. So if you have a calendar, mark it in your calendar. But please um, look out for our emails and social media because we also will be talking about those. And the last thing is, if you are going to So Happen Be at either NatCon or in the Philadelphia area on May fifth, um, then uh, the uh, national office is actually sponsoring a social work night out. Um, and so we will be having it at the Hard Rock Cafe, May fifth, five thirty to seven thirty. So we will have food. We will also have um, door prizes. Um, but we will have a DJ. And unfortunately, for those of you who work at a nonprofit, you know what I'm about to say. We cannot pay for alcohol, so we do have a cash bar. Uh, but if you're in the area, please um, come out, celebrate. Um, this is a great opportunity for social workers just to have fun. And then you can continue the rest of your night celebrating Cinco de Mayo. All right. Um, so I appreciate you all. That is the end of my uh, presentation. So I'm going to stop sharing. And I did see the chat going off, so I just want to check and see if there were any specific questions.
President McNeil, I've been checking. A lot of it has been addressed otherwise, like uh, Maryland in particular was answering some of the questions from, from the people.
I see. All right. Thank you. All right. Like I said, if any of you have any other questions, and again, I love you guys. Thanks for being such a great tag team. Uh, but if any of you have any questions, please feel free to um, reach out to myself or uh, Joanna. But thank you all. Um, and now I'm going to hand it over to, well, before I hand it over to Angie, are there any specific questions? Comments?
This isn't related to the um, to the, to, to what you just presented, President McNeil. So I will um, like, give people a chance to write something new in the chat. Uh, but I did want to answer the question that Edmund posted uh, several times ago regarding the, the uh, the compact bill and communicating with uh, with your legislators. There is not expected to be a fiscal note associated with the compact. Um, you know, the compact will be a separate body existing in other states. You'll have to pay a small fee in order to participate in the compact. Um, so it's not expected to cost Pennsylvania money, which is one of the reasons why I think I was saying earlier that like the appropriations committee is expected to not really debated or have uh, take a pass on, more or less on it. Um, so you can tell, you can communicate with your elected official when you talk to them that it is expected to be budget neutral. Um, Angie, did you have anything additional that you wanted to say on that?
No, you covered it.
Perfect. Perfect. And I see there are some new comments coming in. Oh yeah, folks who said they attended LEED for the first time. Thank you for doing so. We're greatly, we're very appreciative of that. It was a phenomenal experience. Um, and I think it just keeps getting better and better every year as we um, you know, as like our numbers grow and our message tightens and everything like that. So if you haven't been to LEED before, it is extremely powerful. Um, but there are ways, you know, as professionals, and that's kind of what this district days thing is all about, which transition. Um, but there are ways, you know, as professionals, and that's kind of what this district days thing is all about, which transitions us nicely to our next, to our next segment. Um, it is that you're, there's opportunities to get involved.
But uh Marilyn actually had unmuted her mic before you had started talking. So I just want to go back and Marilyn, was there anything that you had wanted to say?
I was gonna say you did a good job as usual.
Oh.
Thank you though. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we can transition to Angie. Sorry about that, Angie.
But that's quite all right. Thank you so much. Let me pull up my presentation.
Oh, I'll also shout out because I did not introduce her earlier, um, that the other member of our lobbying team is here as well. Natalie, hi.
I apologize for being late.
That's okay. I think we were all phasing in at one point or another.
Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joanna. That was on my list to do first was introduce my colleague Natalie Cook, also with McNeese GR. Um, so I would please, well, I would welcome, you know, input from, from Natalie as well as President McNeil and Joanna as I kind of ro- roll through this presentation. Um, you know, because I'm going to be referencing some of the things that are on the web, the website that the staff have done um, and President McNeil, please chime in with the um, you know, anything you have to add as well. But thanks, everybody. Angie Armrest and we'll kind of get, get started on what is district days, district days twenty twenty-five. Um, it's a chance to advocate. And again, uh, you know, President McNeil kind of went through the CS support us, pay us campaign and touched on why it's important. Why do we advocate? What is it for? Uh, it provides you with an opportunity to take an ownership and to have a say in what's expected of you as professionals. You are licensed by the state of Pennsylvania. You fall under laws and regulations that are, that are, that, that are as a result of um, you know, laws and regulations that's the state of Pennsylvania affect you in your workplaces, affect you in your practice. Um, advocacy gives you an avenue to learn about things that are going to impact your career and an avenue to make change in your career. So that is the why. The when, when is it? Uh, the event is going to be June second through fifth of this year. So just in a few weeks from now, as President McNeil mentioned, we've got the press conference on our budget priorities scheduled for Tuesday, June third uh um, in the, inside the main Capitol rotunda, so not the steps this, this time. This one's a little bit of a smaller, more intimate affair, but we are on the steps inside the Capitol, which we absolutely can still kind of fill in nicely with people with signs and have a great visual uh inside the dome. So if you're able to, certainly connect with Joanna and uh make arrangements to attend if you can. But the out, the time period, we're asking you to reach out to your representative, to your senators is June second through fifth. So we're kind of doing this training now, so you have time to get, reach out to them, to contact them, to the, review the talking points of that we're going to be sharing with you and get comfortable with the material. So you can call and request a meeting or a phone call or a virtual meeting sometime during that week. Um, what is district days? It is focused meetings with members of the Pennsylvania legislature where they're at in their district offices. Now I, there's a caveat because it's June uh and they are in Harrisburg for session in the beginning of the week, but towards the end of the week, they always do return to their district offices. But they also have district staff that staff those offices all the time and meeting with staff is perfectly fine. And staff kind of often have time and availability in their calendars to do meetings when the members are in the Harrisburg office. So that's kind of why we're, we're targeting a, a, a span of days. Uh, the mission is to educate legislator, ed- educate legislators on NASW's legislative agenda, which will kind of roll through the main talking points in the next slides. It gives you as members an opportunity to co- to connect with your own representative and your own senator in their district in a meaningful way and or with their staff. Um, you know, lead is fantastic for showing a big, strong um visual of support and um, a, a nice compliment of people attending a big rally and then filtering out through the Capitol. And I know schools often will go out and do visits with, you know, the people who represent where their school is. But district days is a bit more intimate and a chance for that one-on-one connection that really helps to build relationships. As I say, in the last point, personal connections is how that, how we ensure that social workers are at the forefront of policy decisions. It's through personal relationships. Our legislative agenda is three-pronged. It is um focused on, sorry, I have to kind of move my visual of all of you so I can see the text. Uh, the social work compact bills. As Joanna referenced, House Bill five fifty-four is finally posted on the legislative website for a public meeting on Tuesday, June sixth. Yay. In the House Professional Licenseur Committee, I did link um, the, a link to the committee's website that where it lists the upcoming committee meeting and then the bill's website as well. If you scroll down, it says, you know, committee meetings and it lists the date officially. So we have that to look forward to and to discuss. Uh, the sweet bill is House Bill sixty-six. And then um Senator Maria Collette has a mental health funding proposal called Time to Fix Pennsylvania's Broken Mental Healthcare. I'll kind of run through each of these really quick, high level. I know Joanna's already talked about the social work compact and what it does. Twenty-six states have now enacted it. Um, I have May move out of Professional Licenseur Committee in May because I did this presentation this morning. And um, sometime between two PM and, and now uh, it has finally officially posted on the website. So it is scheduled for a vote in the Professional Licenseur Committee uh on May sixth. We don't know, um, you know, how quickly it might come to the full House floor. There's, we're hopeful that it would perhaps move to the House floor the following week when they're in session. So there is a chance that that House bill could be out of the House. Um, by the time district days rolls around from June second to fifth, we will keep, we will give that information to NASW. NASW staff will keep all of the talking points that are available on your website up to date for you. So you'll have the most recent movement of the bill and you'll know exactly what you're asking for whenever the time comes when we get to June. The sweet bill, House Bill sixty-six establishes a program to provide funding stipends for MSW students completing internships to support funding deficits that are common during that period. A lot of, you know, students have to forego other employment um, and or, you know, make decisions around healthcare or transportation or food or housing that are really detrimental to their personal situation. So these would be stipends to give support in that critical time period. Um, it addresses the growing need of social workers, especially in underserved communities, and it directly targets this, the shortage of, the shortage of social workers by providing an incentive for students to enter and remain into the field. And again, there's lots more information on House Bill sixty-six on your NASWPA Legislative Advocacy website. Um, lastly, we have Senator Collette's Time to Fix Pennsylvania's Broken Mental Healthcare Proposal. Um, as part of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget process, the General Assembly established a Behavioral Health Commission on adult mental health. This commission was tasked with providing recommendations to the General Assembly on how to spend a hundred million dollars worth of funding. Um, they broke it down. I won't read all the text, but um, long story short, the funding did not get distributed in that manner. Uh, and Senator Collette said, you know, I'm not going to give up on this. This adult mental health is a still a strong need in this state and I'm going to keep introducing this legislation. I'm going to keep, you know, reintroducing this proposal every session until we, to kind of force us to keep having a conversation about fully funding adult mental health and really putting money into workforce development that's critically important. So um, there is not yet uh kind of a one-pager on this proposal, but I'm providing that for NASW, so you'll have it. Um, so your staff, your, your office can have that ready there on your website as well. So now we'll get into the how, you know, what do we do? What's it like to actually request this meeting? What's the process? Um, you go, the last time I did this presentation, the, it was a much less fancy picture. Um, but the legislature has recently updated its website. It's, it's new and refreshed and has beautiful pictures and they move and it's really cool. So um, you'll go to the website listed here and you'll click the Find My Legislator button uh to search for your senator or your representative and your representative using your home address. So I used mine as an example to show you what that looks like. Find my legislator, type in my address. It brings up who my personal representative and senator are. I clicked my senate or I clicked, clicked my representative, Representative Nathan Davidson. And I've highlighted the district information because that's the way you're wanting to call. His capital address information is on the far right, but the district is kind of down in the center, down below. It'll give you the address of where, if you're doing an in-person meeting of where you would go and it gives you the phone number. So that's going to be how, how you contact. So how to request, I apologize, how to request the meeting? Um, phone calls work best in this situation to the district office. Um, I would know your availability for that timeframe from June second to fifth, you know, know ahead of time. I could probably do a twenty-minute Zoom meeting on my lunch break on Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. Like kind of have in mind what works generally best for your schedule, just in case they say, okay, let's look at the schedule right now. Um, be flexible, be as flexible as you can. If you're able to offer, um, you know, I have two dates that could work or I have this timeframe that could work. Um, it's also kind of nice to be flexible about saying, I'm happy to meet with staff, happy to meet with the representative. I'm happy to come in person. If needed, I have availability to do a phone call or I could do virtual, you know, kind of settle into what's comfortable for you. Um, but be also kind of being mindful about um, making yourself available around their schedule. When you call, state your name and just say, I'm a social worker. I live in Representative so-and-so or Senator so-and-so's district and I'd like to meet to discuss bills that are important to me as a social worker and to my state association. Um, you might be asked to send an email to the scheduler in the office to follow up, kind of some offices have their own preference where they like to have kind of a paper trail uh via email with your contact info and what bills you want to discuss. And again, you'll, all that stuff will be available to you on the NASWPA website. Um, or you might just get lucky and say, uh, sure, the legislative director in the district is free on Tuesday at ten and schedule your meeting right then. So like we said, phone calls work best, kind of be prepared as you're getting ready to make that call. Where your meeting will go, take place, I kind of touched on this. It could be at the district office. It could be virtual. It could be a phone call. Um, definitely confirm the address on the website when you look up your representative, but then confirm it too when you call. Occasionally they move. Um, and sometimes it takes a little bit of time for websites to get updated, but they do try their best to keep that up to date because it's critical information. Who will you meet with? As I said, it could be with the representative, especially if it's going to be a Thursday or Friday from, of, of that week. It could very likely be district office staff. It could be a combination of both. Maybe it would be the representative virtually from his office in Harrisburg and you know, the district manager from their office and then you in your office. Um, any combination of those are perfectly fine and acceptable. It's not an insult at all to be asked to meet with staff. Staff in the, in the legislature are incredibly capable people. They are tasked with being um issue experts and distilling information for their boss because their bosses are faced with a lot of different uh people wanting their time and attention all the time. So they really do rely on their very sharp, very well-informed staff to keep them up to date. Sorry, that was a little abrupt at the end. But please, Natalie, President McNeil, please feel free to add anything.
Um, President McNeil just recently added in the chat that her dog escaped out of the fence, so that's, she had to go um, take off after her dog, which uh makes sense. And we wish her the best of luck in recovering her dog quickly. Um, but uh, yeah, the only other thing that I'll add on um is that, yeah, those district offices, um, I don't think I knew, I don't think I totally knew what to expect when I first started visiting legislators in their district offices. Um, like again, I drive, I end up driving past mine all the time now that I sort of know where they are and what to look for. Didn't know that that would, didn't know that that would happen. Um, also like, you know, it might be a part of a strip mall, like one of my legislators that I went to go visit, you know, they had a, their little office was right next to a UPS store and you know, kind of looked like that on the inside, you know, just kind of broken off into, to little um, office spaces and district areas. They're a lot more informal in the district offices than they are in um, the Harrisburg offices. Uh, they're more likely to be wearing like casual clothing, uh, like to just kind of, you know, walk in and have an informal conversation, that sort of thing. Um, so those are all, um, I, I think random things to know that are a little bit different than when, um, you know, than when I was giving similar trainings about going to, to lead. And you know, if you're meeting with folks in your legislator's office, it's a guarantee that like pretty much everybody's going to be in like a three-piece, you know, suit. Um, full business attire. Um, relatively fast-moving, right? Because they might have like thirty appointments that day, but in the district, it's more informal. It's more calm. It's more casual. Um, but it's also like right there. And if, you know, and there's pretty, pretty much no difference between a Zoom meeting and that me, you know, and that meeting. So if they do say like, no, we can meet via Zoom or um, you know, we've been, we certainly since the, you know, since COVID, but even way past that, because we've just kind of gotten used to it as a, as a structure. Um, the way that Angie and Natalie and I, along with our, you know, as your staff team, but along, along with our uh legislative volunteers like President McNeil, like Kathy or our other uh conference or other legislative committee chair, um, Katie Morton. Um, we do these meetings all the time via Zoom and they're very like for informal and again, easy to get on. Uh, they, they work, they work very well. Angie, I saw you come off mute, so I was assuming you.
Um, I would just add to, uh, and please, if people have questions, please type them in the chat or just ask. Um, but I, I would, I just want to address too that this sounds and feels like a really big, heavy ask of us to ask you to call their office and ask for a meeting. Um, but I, but please don't feel like it is, we're asking you to do something that um, that you're not equipped to do, that you don't have the skills to do, uh, and that is that wouldn't be welcome. You are absolutely in your community, the, as a person who lives and potentially also works, you know, in the district that these people serve. They want to engage with you. They want to know who you are, what population you're working with, what your job is like, what issues are important to you. And, and you know, you can open with questions like, do you have an experience with social work? Do you uh know a social worker? Do you want to hear a little bit about how I was educated and what my day-to-day work is like? Uh, in addition to the, you know, hitting the highlights of the bills that we're supporting and what we're asking them to do. Um, it's making a personal connection and they are people who seek this out, right? As they run, run into the office. Um, and this is something that you are uniquely skilled at doing via your education and training. You are natural connectors with people. So you're uniquely suited to do this work really, really well.
I think that's something that, like, like what you just said, just to remind, um, just reminded me of something like um, pretty significant, which is, you know, I, I, if we think about it from the legislator's perspective, you know, they're, they're coming into these scenarios and um, you know, being asked to make policy decisions that impact the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the entire uh, like every profession that's out there. And it's like literally impossible for any one person, regardless of their education or training. Maybe they're lawyers, maybe they're um, you know, maybe they're doctors, maybe they're whatever, but they're also um, you know, they're not going to be experts on everything. They're not going to be ex, you know, they can't be experts on social work and education and like zoning laws or veterans care and healthcare and they, they kind of differentiate. And they, they kind of differentiate that out a little bit by being on, serving on separate committees and having hired staff people. Um, but they still, part of the way that they need in for, to get information is to get it from their constituents and the people that they're serving. So it's not even just that you're like asking to meet with them, to ask them a favor. You're kind of providing them with unnecessary service, like that is our role in this process as a general rule, um, which is to provide them with the, the information that they need to do their jobs effectively. Um, they, uh, they, you know, they kind of are aware that they're not an expert. They may or may not have even heard of social workers. Most of the folks that we've met with have at least, you know, kind of know the basics of who we are, but, um, you know, we've certainly encountered legislators who are less familiar with others. Um, only one social, only one legislator actually is a social worker. That's, uh, Representative Arian Abney, who happens to be the sponsor of our, um, you know, compact bill. Because he is such a tremendous advocate of the profession. Um, you know, but others, others have, uh, social workers as their, uh, wives, daughters, sons. Um, yeah, yeah, staff is a big one. A lot of them have social workers on staff. Um, some of them have had, uh, social work interns placed at their offices for their, um, you know, for their MSW studies. Um, they need to do, they frequently need to do constituent services, which is to contact, um, you know, contact social services in, in relation to people who are asking them for, you know, how do I get connected to, you know, elder care services for my aging parent? How do I find, uh, my electricity just got shut off? How can I find support for that? Or like help against a, uh, an unlawful eviction or that sort of thing. Social workers are frequently the folks who know those kinds of resources and how to get those kinds of services done. Um, so don't be surprised if they ask you questions like, you know, well, what are you experiencing in your day-to-day life? Like what barriers, what, what policies might make things better? Uh, because the ones who really genuinely care about these situations, they, you know, they're kind of going to us as people as those knowledgeable about what's actually happening and going like, well, how can we make some tweaks? What would make a difference? So, um, that's been my experience.
And, and I would just add one more note too, and I know Joanna usually covers this when we do legislative trainings. Um, don't feel intimidated or off put over the fact that you may be of a different political party. You're, you're providing information to them about you as a constituent and as a voter in their district about the work that you do in that district and about, you know, the services that you provide to people who live in your community. That is all information that they want to know. Political party aside, again, this is, they, they want to be connected to their communities. Um, I think you, you, you realize all politics gets real local. It gets everybody's sort of barriers break down the more local you get. So just because someone says or does something at a rally in Harrisburg does not necessarily mean, um, that's their MO in their district.
That's how they are in their office when they're talking to you individually.
Yeah, checking preconceived notions at the door is really helpful because you'd be surprised how many people, even if they don't share the same views as you, are incredibly kind and personable when they have a constituent in front of them.
Mm-hmm. And I want to talk a little bit about that too. Like one of the things, especially in this environment that we're in now, it becomes really easy to paint everybody into a corner and be like, all right, well, just because, because you have an R by your name or a D by your name, that means you believe all of these, you know, this list of things. And I mean, I haven't encountered it in a while and, you know, I know that we are getting more partisan in nature and we'll, and we'll see that, but it still is a thing where you don't necessarily know how anyone feels. And that you're part of the nature of working in the legislature or any sort of advocacy, advocacy environment is that you have to accept the nature of coalitions and the fact that, you know, whoever may be your best friend on this bill uh, might be, um, you know, might be a, an outright opponent on the next and that those kind of things are okay. Um, I know that, for example, um, thus the sponsor of the compact bill in North Carolina is, uh, someone who, you know, is championing their compact bill and is, you know, definitely carrying the water for them on that compact bill. But it's somebody who does not agree with NASW stances on multiple other things. And they're kind of, it have, have illuminated the experience of walking, of walking that line. Um, similarly, when I used to work in the, when I used to work at another chapter prior to moving to Pennsylvania, I encountered a situation where, um, I was working on something in relation to suicide prevention. And there was somebody who, you know, genuinely did not agree with any of our bills on much of anything. But because he had a family member who had committed suicide and was impacted personally by this issue, it was something that he had done quite a bit of research about and, um, felt a little bit differently. And so we were able to, you know, get someone as a champion of a bill who, um, would probably never be associated with NASW for any other reason. Um, and you, and you just kind of have to welcome those experiences when they, when they come around. So I don't know for the, for the forty or so people we've had on this call today. I don't know, you know, what districts you live in, what your experiences are. I know we have legislators who are more friendly and welcoming and are just like immediate supporters of, and advocates of the social work profession. We have others that have occasionally been more hostile, but, uh, you know, and that's to us as the, as the profession. But we do, we can pretty much guarantee, not a hundred percent, but we can pretty much guarantee that your experience of walking into the legislator's office is not going to be a confrontational one unless you decide to make it a confrontational one and decide you want to challenge them on, on their past viewpoints or every, and everything else. For the most part, other than that, they're going to be there to listen to you, to hear what you have to say, um, to take your feedback into consideration. And that's going to be true whether they eventually go your way or not. So don't, definitely don't walk into it expect, expecting your experience to be unpleasant, even if you, even if you completely disagree with your legislator on like everything that they ever vote for.
I think if you're really trying to suss out where your meeting might go, you have a few minutes, um, after you've looked up who your legislator is, to click on them and scroll down to the bottom of that page. Um, it's a little hard to read on this new website. I don't love it. But down at the bottom of their websites, they have, um, the list of their recent cosponsor memos. And cosponsor memos usually can give you a little bit of a, a picture about what's important to that legislator in particular, um, what they're working on currently. Um, some of it may be fluff, some of it may be something somebody's introduced year after year after year as a, as a favorite to a constituent or something. But it gives you an idea of a general picture of the things they care about, the things that they're invested in. Um, so that's one way to kind of figure out where, where might this person sit? What kind of issues are they working on? What might I be able to connect them, connect on then, connect with them on, excuse me?
Yeah. And it's hard to say, you know, knowing specifically about the compact bill. Like we said, there's a possibility that before district days happens, that bill may even be out of the house. It's probably not going to be out of the house and the Senate by that stage. Never know, fingers crossed and all of that. Um, but one of the, the really big things about the compact bill in particular is that we have seen bipartisanship. Um, our House bill, um, is sponsored by a Democrat. As we said, a Democrat, a social worker, Representative Arian Abney. Um, but we have at least three, uh, Republicans who have, um, signed on as cosponsors to the bill. Um, similarly, uh, the, the, the bill in the Senate, um, is, uh, they're sponsored by a Republican, a Republican veteran, uh, Senator Penny Cook. Um, when we were pushing for bipartisanship during the time when the, um, when the Senate sponsor memo was being released, when it finally came through as a Senate Bill five eighty-three, it had twelve cosponsors on the bill. Um, seven Democrats, five Republicans, um, which, you know, for being the Senate is like a good, what quarter of the Senate?
That's great. It wasn't great. It was a testimony to lead because the bill was in cosponsor form. And then shortly after lead was introduced as a, as, as a bill with a bill number and the list of sponsors was healthy.
Substantial. And, and almost evenly split between Republicans and Democrats. So, um, we definitely know that, you know, that no matter, that regardless of the political party, that there is at least some appetite for like, let's make a difference, let's get some things done that are going to actually help people. And, um, something like a social work compact is, you know, a fairly, uh, easy one to say like, yeah, I don't have an objection to that, like what was it? I think we were meeting, um, with a legislator not too long ago, um, asking him to sign on so that we could increase our bipartisanship in the, in the House. And his, after we talked to him about the bill, he's like, well, that's just like super logical, isn't it?
And he signed on that day, I think.
Yeah, it's on that day. Like, I don't know, we can't do that. That's way too logical and easy a thing to do. Um, but, but you know, hopefully we'll get, uh, uh, discussions like that when you're, when you're meeting with your legislators, no matter what it, what it's, what it's actually about. Um, mental health issues, um, I've met with Republicans and Democrats. They all seem to care about mental health, one or another. They definitely may disagree about the approach that's best to take, where funding is best allocated and that sort of thing. But that's why meeting with you as individuals can make a difference in that because their opinion about any of that may be more philosophical or, um, you know, based off of conjecture um, or just, uh, like even research or like that sort of thing, but we know that that sits differently than this is the experience that one of my clients had when they were trying to access services and couldn't. This was the, um, you know, um, to take an example, I've heard recently, this is the, the story of the person that I've heard who, um, you know, who, who was an immigrant who got, uh, relocated because of, um, you know, but just despite family situation because they're attacked, you know, because their stalker was, uh, trying to harm them or other things like that. And I know that these, so these individual stories can make this huge impact. Um, beyond, I think what we, what we feel like we have the ability to do and all of this with getting involved in, in legislative, legislative and advocacy work as a mac, you know, the macro part of your, of your social work, um, profession and our obligation under the code of ethics really, um, is bringing those stories to the forefront, whether that be like empowering clients to bring those stories to themselves. But sometimes it's on us to carry that to them so that those, their voices can be heard, even if it's not them able to, to bring it. Their stories live on and can make an impact in the, the, the minds and hearts of, of our elected officials.
Yeah, I think that that's really powerful. And I, I would say too, you're also talking about, um, you're talking about the field and your colleagues and how, and, and yourself. And maybe, you know, they, you might get a question like, well, why, why is it hard to keep people in this field? Or what's, what's so hard about, you know, attracting people to this field? And you can say, you know, if you have an experience like, well, a colleague was burnt out and overworked and made more money at convenience store. Or, you know, you can kind of lay out personal experiences of, of other people in the, in their community. That again, they're, they don't know that information if we don't share it with them.
That ties it really well back to the CS support us, AS campaign.
And one quick, one quick note about the website, um, I was just scrolling over there and looking, um, when you scroll down to the bottom, as Natalie said, you can look at cosponsor memos, there is technically a bio line. Um, it's not very good. It's really not very detailed at all. It's kind of like what they're educated in or what their career was in before they came to the legislature. I would highly encourage you to just do a quick Google search of your representative and of your senator. They have their own websites as well. In addition to this legislative site, their own websites have their full bios that are much more in-depth. They have, um, a news center of press releases that talk about recent work they've done. So again, you want to get, if you want to get comfortable, I'm a research person. I like to know, you know, what I'm walking into. So that's a great place to do kind of background research before you make your phone calls.
It is, it is. I've been to those websites as well. Um, they do, you know, and it is also helpful to know. And especially because we're talking about, when we're talking about district days, we're talking about your representative, your senator. I'm going to say maybe at least half of them have some sort of thing where you can sign up to receive a newsletter from, from them. Um, that comes out like maybe once a month, giving updates from your legislator's office. Again, whether that's somebody that you agree with or disagree with, um, politically, it can be helpful just to get those memos as somebody who is a, you know, constituent of the district. So that, you know, because even if it's, even if it's somebody that, you know, that you're going to read their memo and it's going to make you angry if you see something specific that's like, well, I need to talk to them about this. Then you, then you have the opportunity to do so when you wouldn't have otherwise. Um, but it can be, and, and they have like random, uh, community things like shredding, paper shredding days or, um, uh, community events, uh, with, um, like health-related health fairs and that sort of thing is, uh, other things you might get alerted to from signing up for their newsletter. Well, it, we are hitting, right about hitting on that, uh, seven thirty time. So did want to check in, um, just to make sure, see if there was any other comments, questions, um, before we sign off. Um, certainly I do want to say, and I think this is, I can speak for all three of us, uh, Angie, Natalie and myself. When I say that, you know, that if your halves, if you have something scheduled with your legislator and you're coming up in that meeting and then you're kind of freaking out about like, well, what do I do? What do I say? Like that sort of thing. Any one of us would be an excellent resource and would be happy to like, just have a phone conversation to get that scheduled. Um, talk you through it, like, um, answer the questions that might be coming up in your head, answer whatever anxiety or, you know, like your, your feeling as you step into that situation. Um, you know, and, and those, yeah, it, those are going to be easy. But as we said, uh, like we're talking about early June. So, um, now's the time to really just start making those phone calls and say like, can I get an appointment so that you have that on the books and know when it's going to be coming up, um, when the time comes?
Thank you all for your time.
Yep. Thank you as well. All right, um, we are having a meet the candidates event tomorrow for, uh, to just to talk to our two lovely um, ladies who are running for president-elect, uh, to succeed President McNeil, President McNeil, who is on tonight. Um, so if you want to join us, that one, no CE is attached to that one. It's a short event, only forty-five minutes, starts at seven o'clock. But check our social media and you'll see the, and you'll see the app for that. Um, but, uh, just wanted to make sure you were aware before we sign off for the night. Otherwise, thank you and good night.